I'm going to call the Temecula Planning Commission Regular Meeting of April 17th, 2024 to order, and I will do the flag salute, so if you stand and join me, I appreciate it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, roll call.
Commissioner Ruiz.
Here.
Solis.
Here.
Watts.
Here.
And Chairman Hagel.
Here.
And we have one excused absence from Charlie Trayeb.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments?
No public comments.
No public comments? Okay, then I'll skip reading that, so you don't have to sit through all that again. But I do have to read, we have a consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the commission request specific items to remove from the consent calendar for separate action. A total of 30 minutes is provided for each member or for members of the public to address the commission on items that appear on the consent calendar. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a special speaker card to the commission secretary. Speaker cards will be called in the order received. Still images may be displayed on the projector. All other audio and visual use is prohibited. Public comments may also be submitted by email for inclusion into the record. Email comments must be received prior to 6:00 PM and be submitted to the planning commission at temeculaca.gov. All public participation is governed by council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by resolution number 2021-54. And we have the minutes. If I can get a motion on the minutes, I'd appreciate it.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Okay, so we have a first by Commissioner Ruiz and a second by Commissioner Watts. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
So we have 4:00, and we will go on to public hearing. So we have two public hearings tonight, and I will read. I do have to read for the public hearing. Any person may submit written comments to the commission for a public hearing or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition of the approval of the projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in writing, or written correspondence delivered to the commission secretary at or prior to the public hearing. For public hearings, each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary or by submitting an email to be included into the record. Email comments must be submitted to the planning commission at temeculaca.gov. Email comments on all matters, including those not on the agenda, must be received prior to the time the item is to be called for public comments. Any person dissatisfied with the decision of the commission may file an appeal of the commission's decision. Said appeal must be filed within 15 calendar days after service of written notice of the decision. The appeal must be filed to the appropriate community development department form and be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee. All public participation is governed by city council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by resolution number 2021-54. So, thank you for your patience. I appreciate it. We're going to start with our number two, planning application numbers PA 23-0030, PA 23-0026, and PA 23-0027. A development plan to allow the construction of two commercial structures totaling approximately 414 square feet and related conditional use permits for drive-through lanes. Structures will be used for a restaurant and coffee shop. The project is located at 29540 Rancho California Road in Eric. Thank you.
Project 4 is a development plan to allow for the construction of two commercial structures and their related conditional use permits for drive-through lanes. The project is generally located approximately 300 feet east of the Inez Road and Rancho California Road intersection. It's there in the red boxed area you see before you. It is the former Claim Jumper Restaurant site. Now, that former Claim Jumper site will need obviously be demolished to make way for the project. That would be a separate review through a demolition permit through our building and safety department. The two structures, as was just previously mentioned, will be used, one for a coffee shop and the other one for a restaurant. Both will have drive-through lanes. Vehicular access to the site will remain the same as it is in that large Target shopping center. We all know where it is and how to get in there. Pedestrian access also will remain the same, with the exception of they have added along Rancho California Road an ADA ramp to kind of go up the slope a little bit. We'll see that in just a moment. Take a look here at the site plan. You can see the Ono Hawaiian BBQ there, as well as the Better Buzz. Here we have the entrances to the double-laned drive-throughs. And then right here next to our adjacent to Rancho California Road, this is the start of that pedestrian ADA access. You can see how it kind of does the switch back to get up the hill. Take a quick look at the floor plans. Here we have the Ono floor plan. Right, there's the main entrance. You enter the dining room. You see the sales area, kitchen. There's a patio off to the right-hand side. And then for Better Buzz, enter into the main eating area. You can see the the sales area and whatnot. Architecturally, both structures, they incorporate more of a modern architectural style. I've just listed some of the elements that are included for both projects. And let's take a look here at these elevations. Here we have the architecture for Better Buzz. We have the north elevation. It's kind of, there's the patio area, there's the main entrance. Then we have the south elevation here along the drive-throughs, drive-through. Southeast elevation, this is what would be facing Rancho California Road, that southeast elevation. And then we have the northeast elevation, and there's a little drive-through window right there. Move on to the Ono Hawaiian BBQ. Here we have the east elevation. Excuse me, that northeast elevation. That faces internal towards the parking lot. And then on the bottom, the southeast elevation, that's kind of a combination of looking towards the east as well as you'd see the back of the building. Where you see the Ono Hawaiian BBQ, that is what would be facing Rancho California Road. And then here we have the southwest elevation. It's kind of the other side, but you still see the rear as well. From a landscaping perspective, you can see that the project is going to incorporate a variety of landscape treatments. These will also be used to kind of soften the project, if you will. And as we've been talking about, the project does require drive-through lanes, and the code requires that there must be up to six spaces behind menu boards. That's one of the bigger requirements from the development code. And I've just listed here that Better Buzz can accommodate nine cars behind the board, and Ono can accommodate up to eight cars. There's also a queuing analysis prepared by Trains Solutions. They looked at other Better Buzz and Ono BBQ sites that are similar in size and similar as far as where they're placed and kind of what the volume is, and their analysis indicated that the drive-through lanes that they have here should be adequate to handle their project. We did receive public correspondence today in opposition to the project. There is a copy of it up there for you at the dais. Take a look at it, but I'll go ahead and just read it into the record. It says regarding PA 23-0030, PA 23-0026, and PA 23-0027, "I urge the planning commission to deny the above requests for fast food drive-through concerns at this location. This is a prime location across from the Duck Pond. The location warrants a more upscale concern. Fast food drive-throughs will cheapen the area, not improve it. Thank you. Cheryl Medina." That's the only correspondence we received on this project. From a sequel perspective, staff believes it's exempt for Section 15332, as it is an infill development project, meets all those requirements. And based on the information just presented, staff recommends the planning commission, planning commission, excuse me, approves the project based upon the required findings and the draft conditions of approval. This concludes our presentation. I'm available for questions. Applicant and his team are in the audience if you'd like to speak with them as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. We'll start down here. Commissioner Solis? Questions?
I just have a question about the elevation from the street side. There's a big grade change, and what's the grade change from the finished floor, the sidewalk to the top? And then also, there's landscape. So this is going to be a branny landscaped area throughout the whole side of the street?
Well, let's answer that question first. So the landscaping here that you see along the slope, that's all going to be protected in place. They're going to add in throughout the site along the top here. Actually, can you, let me mark this up here. Can we see that? Okay. Oh, you got, okay, there we go. So the landscaping here mostly along the slope will be protected in place. Obviously, they'll have to remove to get the ADA ramp in. And then once you get up on the site, that's where these additional landscape treatments come in.
Okay. And also, if I could see the material board?
Yep.
That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
In answer to your other question, Commissioner, it's about a 10 to 15-foot grade differential between the street, where the cars are, and where it'll be. And it's 10 to 15 because it does taper, because the driveway entrance into the town, into the plaza, you know, Rancho Cal is actually going up. So that's why the difference in the taper.
One more, one more question, too. The existing Claim Jumper in relation to this new, these two new buildings, is it on the same kind of wall, or is it set in more?
The existing Claim Jumper sits right about, I'll try, it might take a moment to come in, but it's right about here where I'm shading in. It's similar.
Okay. So it's not set back more because?
No.
Like the drive, I mean, the car?
No, it's, it's, it's similar.
So it's up to the edge?
It's similar.
So you'll see the whole full height of the, of the south elevation?
You will, you will see some of that, but you gotta remember, right here along the landscaping, you see these, this landscape treatment right here. These are designed to help shield the drive-through, and that is a development code requirement, because we want to try to shield those drive-throughs. So there is going to be landscape treatment that kind of raises up a little bit to block some of the cars, which will obviously block some of the building as well.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
No questions? Go ahead.
Just two, real quick. So kind of along those lines, the area that you shaded there, and obviously it's not exact to scale, but I was trying to figure out, is the, is the footprint bigger to accommodate these? Like, is it going to cut into where there's current, either vehicle access or parking lot, or is it all kind of fit within the existing footprint?
The existing Claim Jumper goes from approximately the, you see, okay, I already marked it up here, but where the Ono Hawaiian BBQ is, where I started highlighting, the existing Claim Jumper comes down to right about here at the start of this drive-through for Better Buzz. Right, there we go. And then what's, where you see these, this double-lane drive-through for Better Buzz, right now for Claim Jumper, that's parking. If you look at the aerial, you'll see those parking spots right there. Their trash enclosure areas right there, and then where they got their food delivered is right in that general area.
Got it. Okay. And then was there any of the elevation or renderings provided with both locations included? Like, there was one of each one individually, but was there anything showing?
We did, they did not provide a photo sim that shows them both together, no.
Nothing with both? Okay.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So we stay on this, this slide here. My questions, I think, relate to traffic, parking, and particularly Better Buzz. The turn into the, into the drive-through lane appears to be fairly steep, and I was wondering what length of a vehicle can make that turn safely, and concerned that, for instance, if somebody tries to go through there with a trailer, you know, like a landscape trailer, a fairly modest-sized trailer, if they can make that turn, or would they get stuck there and create, you know, create a problem?
I can't really comment. If somebody wants to drive a trailer through a drive-through, what I can tell you is that the queuing and the traffic stay that was done by Trains, they looked at their other uses to figure out the volume and the overall design of this thing, and their professional opinion was that this should be able to accommodate the uses that are going to go, excuse me, the traffic that's going to go into this location.
Okay.
I think the basic answer to that is really that these aren't designed for anything other than vehicles by themselves. And you might be able to get through there with something very small, but I certainly wouldn't try to take my fifth wheel through there.
Well, and the parking they're going to have is going to be along the stack-up lanes. Is that, that correct?
The parking is already existing, and you can kind of see it here. Let me highlight this. You can kind of see it here that should there be an overflow, it will go through this way. And that parking is already existing.
Okay, so if there was cars in that, that stack lane?
Let me back up. Let me go to.
Can people pull out of their parking spaces?
Let me back up to here. So as long as the cars stay along this side?
This side.
They should be able to back out.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think, I would just suggest then that some kind of a sign be put up related to what size vehicle or what length vehicle more particularly can, you know, can go through, so that they don't pull in there and, you know, if they can't, either can't make that turn or get stuck in there, we've got, we've got a backup that's, somebody can't pull back or, you know, there's, and if they can't go forward, you're going to have a major traffic jam there.
So you wanted to add that as a condition of approval to have signage by the drive-through? Okay.
Yeah, I noticed they do, I mean, there is height signage, and, you know, which is usually typical.
Sure.
But I, I think this might warrant having length signage as well, just so they don't create a major problem for themselves and anybody else. Particularly, if you're going through Better Buzz, you're probably doing it in the morning on the way to work, and the last thing you want to do is be stuck for, you know, an hour trying to figure out how to get those cars out so they can go on to work.
Okay.
So if maybe we can focus on questions, because we haven't had the public hearing component yet?
Yeah. I think that's it.
Just one more question.
Okay.
Sorry, one more question. I actually pulled it up on the maps. I've got a nice view of what it currently looks like right now. Seeing where the cars would exit from both buildings, basically is going to go into the existing parking lot. Are those parking lots, are those first couple going to be shaved off or no?
No, they're not proposed to be shaved off.
So they'll go out, basically, it's that first lane and then exit out from there? Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, so we will open the public hearing and ask the applicant to come up? Yeah. It's a whole lot easier to see.
Good evening. My name is George Ray, GTR Property Development. I am the project manager for this development. Address of 26791A, Caye Verano in Capus Fennel Beach, California. I'd like to first start off, and it's been a, it's been a journey. I've been actually involved in this project since November of 2019. And Eric Jones has hung in there with me through thick and thin, and I want to appreciate all of his efforts that he has put in, and he's worked very hard to get this project together. What I'd like to really do is turn this now over for a few comments by Robert Vermeltfort, which is the applicant on the application, and he's a project architect. And he may have a couple of words, and then we're, of course, here to answer any more questions that you have. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you very much, everyone, for taking a look through this rather large application we've got, since it's the three together. So thank you for taking the time to go through that. And I also want to thank Eric and his staff. We have been working with them diligently. Yeah. I have one, too. It's like, whoa, how do we get this much paperwork? So, but as you can tell, Eric and I have been working through it a lot, and I thank him and his staff for working through this. What we're trying to do here, guys, is trying to be good neighbors. We're trying to use as much of the existing shopping centers as we can. Answering your question, we're actually using the building pad. We're not going to raise it or lower it, trying to not have to affect the parking lot, but also keeping the nice appeal from Rancho California Drive. So we're actually using the pad. It's actually a little bit less. You were asking the question of where it's at. The building actually sits, the Claim Jumper building sits at the drive-through lane edge. So it's actually going to be 15, our building is going to be 15 feet further back than where the current building is. Site plan, I think we worked through everything with everybody on the site plan. We do have the queuing analysis. Eric had that up on the page. So just in case we do, everybody is always worried about, okay, what happens when you're too popular? You can't back up and back up shopping center. You sure can't back up to the road. So that's why we took the time to show the queuing analysis up through. Answering your question, yes, it is a two-lane drive, so they will be able to get in and out of their slip spaces when the thing is queued. So, and as far as the elevations, guys, these are not prototypical elevations. We've been working with staff very diligently to make sure it's something that's acceptable to Ono. These are both enhanced elevations. So with that, I've got any questions I can answer. I've also got members from Ono here and from Better Buzz with any operational questions, but we're open to any questions you may have.
Commissioner Solis, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I, I think my biggest concern is more the elevation from the street. This is a big gray change. And then the ramp that's here, it's like over 150 feet just along the elevation from the street.
Welcome to the California Building Code.
And it's a, it's pretty important in the coronary.
So, in answer to the ramp length, we have two choices, unfortunately, with the California Building Code. We go through, we do it at 1/12, which means we have to put guardrails on both sides, which turns it into the skateboarder popular place that they can ride in. So this one's set at 1/20, which is not even really a ramp. It's, it's basically a slope sidewalk. That way you don't have the ramps. That's why it has to do that, that little circuitous jog in order to get it to work. But we've had too many locations that you put the ramps with the, with the guardrails on it, and all of a sudden, you've got the skateboarders everywhere, and the next thing you know, you got injured skateboarders. So that's why it's as long as you see it on there.
Okay.
And the new buildings are actually shorter than the Ono, or not the Ono, than the Claim Jumper building, and they're actually 15 feet further back. So you're actually going to see less of it from the street than you currently do now. And of course, we also have the hedges around the drive-through lane, so that's going to block a lot of the buildings, especially on the angle, too.
Okay, and then you also have a retaining wall?
Little retaining wall, because we're trying to keep as much of the landscaping, since it's all pretty established. So in order to get through the one area, we had to put a retaining wall to get the ramp through.
And how high is that retaining wall?
I think it's two and a half feet.
Oh, I thought that was big.
It's not much.
And then what's the finish on that?
It's just going to be concrete.
Concrete. We can't, can we do something decorative?
You're not going to see it from the street. What happens is the dirt goes up, and we had to go through the hill.
Oh, so it's going to be covered in landscape?
You're not even going to see it from the street. It's going to have landscaping. It's just going to be a little sub area to make the corner.
It's hard to read that, because I don't have those sections.
They're awful small, so.
Okay. And then also, my other question is, in the rendering, I'm talking about this, this one?
Uh huh.
The primary one. It's, it's all black. And then on this, the material sheet, it's calling a metal. It's kind of like an, like a painted?
It's like, it's like a dark bronze anodized, yeah.
Yeah. So is it black or is it?
It's like a dark bronze anodized storefront, just the same storefront, just like that.
Maybe I'm talking, I'm talking about the trim. I'm talking about the full, all the way around, not the storefront system.
Same material. It's all.
It's the same material?
What we wanted to have is we wanted to have the storefront matched with the finish of that little metal wrap that goes around it.
So it's going to be like panels?
Mm-hmm. It's called hemmed metal panels. They kind of bend it in a shape that decays watertight, and then you just attach it right to the wall.
I think it looks great like this, the way it's rendered, black.
It's, it's dark.
Yeah, is there any way we could just, instead of this one, have a solid black?
Yeah. If you want solid black, I can, I can deal with the, the black anodized, no problem. We just want to change that, Eric, in the, in the finish schedule when we do that? Okay. And also, the question about the no trailers, that's easy to put. Our signs have got, our, both sites have got, you know, the welcome sign, and then the drive-through sign, just put no trailers allowed.
Okay.
I think that might have been.
And then, and then this material here, it's like a reclaimed, it's kind of like?
That's the wood panels. That's the wood panels that actually go around the whole top arrow that's up against that metal.
And then how big is each panel?
They're about, they range from six to eight inches.
I think that's it. Oh, one more question was, is there any way the, the drive aisles can be, instead of 12 feet, maybe be like 13, to have a little bit more space? I, I agree with, with some of, you know, one of the commissioners.
Your normal cars are six feet. The normal is 12 feet. What happens is, if you go too wide, then the cars end up further away from the menu boards, and then they're screaming at the, the menu board. So that's why it specifically is set up for 12.
The only reason why I ask is, I don't know why, but people are always going up on the curb and breaking edges of the curb on all the driveways.
That's why you'll see a lot of the new drive-throughs right now are changing out to 15 and 20-foot radiuses, which is what we have. It actually widens up at the corners so that the cars can get around the corners.
Oh, I see that.
Okay. So now what you have is you keep a 12-foot lane to keep them in their lane, and then you widen it up at the corners to give them a little bit of room to turn.
Okay, let me, let me think about that.
Go ahead, yeah, it's fine. Commissioner Watts?
I don't know if you have the answer, but does your business model project the difference between walk-up traffic or walk-ins versus drive-throughs?
I'll turn that over to the experts. I, I know a whole lot of stuff about the buildings, but do you guys have any feelings as to what the number of walk-in versus?
Just a rough percentage guess? Yeah.
Chris Mendoza with Better Buzz. So for a location like this in a giant Target parking lot, we would probably expect about 60 drive-through, 40% walk-in?
Okay.
It was just a matter of which tenants are nearby.
That gives me good, good sense. I'm concerned a little bit about the drive-throughs. We went through this with Starbucks up the street a ways, and we were told that that would solve the problem, and yet I've seen backups into Rancho California routinely. So I'm concerned with this in the fact that once your queue is filled up, do people, are people going to easily be able to tell that they're supposed to go at the end, on the edge of that parking lot or that parking lane?
On the queuing plan, I don't know if you've got it, Eric, but we actually were told to put cones in to show our queuing. There's actually going to be a block off that when it gets too busy, it's going to be blocked off right where that top arrow is, and everybody's going to have to go up to the top to come around.
Up to the top?
See the top arrow? Right at the top arrow at those diagonal lines? You see those cones up there?
Yes.
That is required, it's written in there, that that's going to be where they close off if it's too busy. All the traffic at that point will go ahead and will make the right-hand turn, go up to the top, and then come back around.
Okay.
That way we don't take a chance on queuing out the main driveway, and we definitely won't get near Rancho California.
Right, I'm not worried about Rancho California. I was more concerned with the backup there, but it looks like it can accommodate everything you need. But these drive-throughs are tricky sometimes.
Okay, thank you.
Just, we're trying to be prepared for too much success.
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you, guys, for being here. Are, are these two businesses commonly side by side? Is that normally how these two run, or is this kind of a first, or?
This will be our first one with Ono. All I can say is they've been great thus far.
And do you, are the operating hours for both similar? I mean, do you expect both, I mean, obviously one's coffee and one's food, but, but do you expect there to be a pretty, obviously hopeful for business purposes, but consistent flow of traffic for both of us different, at the same time, or is one open, different?
I can't speak to Ono's operating hours. I would assume them being more of a restaurant, they're probably more afternoon into the late hours, whereas we're more morning, morning focused, being coffee.
Got it.
Probably the morning versus the afternoon. Ono's afternoon.
So, so potentially from a business model standpoint, two different traffic flows
Two different times.
Versus?
Correct.
Versus a bunch coming in at the same time? Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to hold mine. Ask, is, is there any public speakers?
We have none.
We have none, okay. So I will go ahead and ask my questions. The, I noticed where the waste bins are outside. I can envision a CCNR truck coming up into there, and I would, I'm not sure if they would have to back into there, or they can go in front end, but the trucks are fairly large. I don't know if that's an issue that you've thought of regarding what time of the day they may come. Are they going to be backing up traffic? Is that some, an issue that you, you've considered?
Normally what they do is they request the sanitation trucks to come in off hours.
Okay. Okay.
Never had a location where, believe me, sanitation truck drivers do not want in that parking lot when there's any amount of traffic.
Yeah.
So we have never had anybody go through and say, no, we cannot empty the truck.
Ken, excuse me, can I have you speak into the mic for the recording?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Usually my voice is loud enough that I can get away without being too close to the mic.
It's just for the recording, thanks.
No problem, just to clarify, yeah, they'll, they'll do off-hours, they will not be there when the, when the busy times.
Good, okay. The other, the only other thing that I have is the, the parking lines going, going in seem to be on the left side, just to take Better Buzz, going in the left side seems to be in the wrong direction to me. I don't know if that's, I'm accurate about that or not, or?
Which ones?
Well, they all, actually, they all seem to be going against traffic. So when you pull in, usually, you know, you pull in and you turn in that way.
Which is the case.
They seem to be going in the opposite direction.
So first of all, this is the existing parking for the Claim Jumper, and it's right, you come in, you make the right-hand turn, the parking is on an angle, seventy-five degree angle, going to the right. If you come in from the left-hand side, you see you're coming down, you're making the right-hand turn to go in, both, all the islands are facing the right direction.
Okay.
Right.
And then we're stacking the queue in such a way that it's going in the direction of traffic, too.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I have, anybody have any, anything else? Any other discussion? Did you think of anything else?
I'm just looking at the landscape plan and that walkway, it's going to be a long walkway. Just thinking about, maybe we should landscape it with maybe low, low hedges or something like that, all the way through. Or I, I don't know what they're proposing, I don't know if they're proposing grass, I don't know if it's just all green. That's probably my only two concerns, is the, the big, uh?
It's so flat, you're hardly going to see it, remember, it's, it's almost like a sidewalk.
No, I'm not, not worried about hiding it, I'm just, it's just a big area of landscape, if we can do some type of landscape plan there, in that area.
We're going to be putting?
If you can talk into the mic again, please.
We're going to be landscaping again around the?
Relanscaping it?
Because that's, that's the existing enhanced landscaping that's, or, you know, entrenched landscaping, they're going to take it out to put the new stuff in, so we're going to be landscaping around. We can add some, uh, some lobe, you don't want to do a hedge.
No, no, no.
So let's just go ahead, let's just put some sporadic plants around it, we can do that. If Eric wants to add that, too, just go through and put, like, landscaping around the ramp, we can do that.
Or not around the ramp, it's like a cohesive plan throughout the whole thing. And maybe just the, having the, maybe one of the aisles a little bit wider, just drive aisles, maybe thirteen feet, with cutting into some, some of that planter, like a big planter, as you come in, so you can have a better turn in.
On the Ono plan or?
On, no, on the Better Buzz, I'm sorry, the Better Buzz.
So you want to widen the Better Buzz entrance?
The, just the, the south, the south, Better Buzz drive aisle.
Okay.
If you can make one maybe thirteen feet, and then maybe eat into the landscape area, so it's not such a sharp right turn.
Or we can make that bumper that's in between the two, instead of being five feet, we can make it four foot wide. That way we don't even get close to that light, because that's an existing light, uh, parking lot light there.
Yeah, you can do that there.
Jeff, if we want to do that thirteen foot, we can make that bumper in between four foot wide.
Four foot, and then you can eat into that fourteen-foot landscape?
Mm-hmm, play a little with that.
It's just one wider, one wider, so someone wants to go to the wider one, they can go to the wider one.
Yeah, as long as we're not required to widen it up by the time we get to the menu boards, because that never turns out well. You want to push them as close to the menu boards as you can.
Whichever way, just one wider, so people don't hit the menu boards.
I don't have that, Chris, if you guys, Eric can figure that out.
And people are going to rush and. It's probably the only two concerns that I have about the whole thing, and the black, just to represent the rendering and not the material board.
Changed out to dark black anodized, not a problem.
And the Better Buzz looks great, and the finishes look awesome, so.
Good, okay, Eric, do you want to summarize what other conditions?
Do, do we want to close, are, are we done with the questions, so we can close the public hearing and then do deliberations?
Uh, yes, well, I'll close the public hearing, thank you.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So perhaps we have deliberations, and then we can summarize all the, or did you want to hear the summary right now?
Why don't we hear the summary now, then, that way we know if there's anything additional that?
Okay, so what I have here is we have to add a sign to talk about no trailers in length, and we're not going through the drive-throughs. We have on the Ono building, that trim around, that surrounds the building, to switch that to a black instead of the dark bronze. Regarding the ADA path ramp, we have enhanced landscaping through that area. And then for the drive-through for the Better Buzz, we have making a portion of that thirteen feet wide, but what the applicant could also do is take that little center island and shorten that by a foot, and that would be satisfactory as well. That's what I have.
Okay.
Would that, I think, maybe widening one aisle to thirteen feet?
Yeah, but if I heard you correctly in your discussion with the applicant, that could also be accomplished by shortening the little island by, cut a, cut a foot off of it.
Sure.
That would be satisfactory to you as well.
And then what happens as you drive in, is it still going to be, is it going to narrow down to twelve, or?
Yeah, right now it would.
That's what the applicant is asking for, so that you can push the vehicles over towards the menu board.
Oh, I understand, that's fine.
Okay.
I think that's good, my concern is only as you drive in, is a sharp turn and hitting the side of that, that area.
So just to clarify, are we saying that the south drive aisle is going to be widened to thirteen feet? But that can be accomplished by reducing the?
Landscape thing around it? Take a foot off of it, make it, make it thinner.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So does that make it thirteen feet?
Mm-hmm, in the entrance.
And can I ask, other than just someone's preference, I like the wider lane, what, what is the reasoning behind the need for thirteen versus twelve?
So my, my reasoning behind it is, I'm just saying a truck can't go through a drive, I'm just saying a regular truck, my truck, my truck, I don't go through the drive-throughs.
Could your truck go through the Starbucks?
No.
Are they, are they twelve-foot lanes also? Because that is a really tight turn in there.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you about talking.
Are they, are the Starbucks at the corner of Margarita and Rancho California, the one where we had to fix the, the drive-through because they didn't want two lanes? Well, I lost my train of thought on that.
You're talking about the white knee?
Yeah, I just don't, thirteen foot, I don't get why it needs to be thirteen, if obviously twelve was good enough to submit it. But I, I, I mean, it's just, if the applicant doesn't care, then I don't care, but I'm just curious what the need is for it, so.
Well, Commissioner Solis is saying that he has a concern with folks trying to get larger vehicles through that area, so he's recommending that it gets widened by a little bit, and the applicant seems to be amenable to that.
Yeah.
So.
They could get out of there, park their car and walk in, too, so.
They couldn't.
Yeah, especially if they have a big car, they probably know that, anyhow, that's, that's fine.
But a truck could get through, that's, what he's saying is that his truck won't go through.
No, my truck won't go through, I'm just thinking if my truck won't go through and it's a regular truck, then I'm thinking, hey, if we've?
Is that a common complaint? Is that a common complaint, that trucks can't get through the lane? I didn't think so.
If you, I'm sorry, so the public hearing is closed, if we want to reopen and have them come up, if you need that answered, or we can just in the records indicate that the applicant has said it's not a concern?
I'll just, I'm going to make a, make a leap and make an assumption that the trucks can, that there's not a problem with twelve foot, otherwise we would probably widen it to thirteen a long time ago, that's all.
Okay, do you have anything else? Are you, you good, well, for, we, we went through what is, what conditions are being set out? If, are you good with the conditions, or you have any changes or additions?
I mean, no, no necessary changes, I, I understand Commissioner Solis's point, we talked about that at, at another one, but we only talked about addressing this with one of the two buildings also. Like, if it was a concern, maybe it should have been both or, or not, so I just trying to figure out what's warranted there. And then same, same with the color, I mean, I, I, looking at the rendering, I mean, I agree it looks dark over here, but looking at the, at the material board, there's some contrast here, and if this, if what we're looking at, if this were to go all black, then it's solid black, very dark black, I mean, I guess it's, it's not super important, I guess, but I don't, I don't, I don't really have a problem with this color, color either, I, I guess, um, either way.
Either way, okay. Anything else? Do we want to make a motion, or any other discussion?
I can make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
My motion would be to, to approve the, the plans asset with having the drive aisles at twelve, and just that one foot buffer, I mean, that, making that landscape planter to four. And to approve the plans as, as submitted then, without the changes to the material.
Okay, but with the other conditions set out?
With the landscape condition.
Yeah, but you just said without change to the materials, so we're going to go?
Change to the material board.
So we're not going to go black, we're going to stick with what they proposed?
That's fine.
Okay.
I feel like people, one of my commissioners saying, hey, well, it looks good, and then?
I, I just, I think the contrast there, I just want to clarify for yours, the, the widening of the one drive-through, you're only talking about on the Better Buzz side. We're not addressing anything on?
Yeah, I was only talking about the Better Buzz as you, just the sharp turn in, that sharp turn as you get into the, the southern aisle. That was the only reasoning behind widening that, and there's a fourteen-foot planter. That was the only?
Because the entrance has a sharp turn, rather than, and the other one is straight through.
Yeah, those are straight through.
So I just want to make sure I'm understanding, um, you, so the conditions would be, keep, so the motion would be to adopt a planning application, PA twenty-three dash zero, zero, three, zero, with the following changes. The first is that a no trailer sign will be added to the drive-through. The ADA path will have some enhanced landscaping, and then the south drive aisle for the Ono will?
For the?
I'm sorry, for the Better Buzz.
Better Buzz.
And this is where I got confused, you said it would stay as twelve feet?
It would stay at twelve feet, but the entrance would be thirteen feet, because the landscape planter would be at four instead of five.
Okay.
Wait, can we pull up the landscape plan quick and just make sure we're looking at the right thing? Just want to make sure. So you're talking about, because there's, there's a couple of different landscape plans here, just want to make sure we're talking about the right one. So I'm going to highlight, so this guy right here, that's the one with a really sharp turn.
Right.
And that's the one you're talking about, or are you talking about?
The center, the center median, or the?
This one kind of in the middle right here.
No, the other one, as you go into the entrance. The first, what is that, is a median or is a planter, as you go inside?
The first, the first one that I just highlighted.
No, between the two cars.
Between where the two cars are at.
Where is that, sir, I'm not understanding.
Right here.
Oh, okay, that one, got it, got it.
The architect said that by reducing that from five feet to four feet to accomplish the thirteen feet to widen that entrance. And then the landscape plan would be for the, for the entire, like a cohesive plan for the entire site along the street side.
Do you have any details on the cohesive plan? Because that, that's a pretty broad category, just a cohesive plan.
I'm sure, as of right now, there is no, the, the plan is to keep the landscape as is.
Right.
So to create a landscape plan for that area.
Well, the plan is to keep the landscaping here along Rancho California Road for the most part protected in place, and then you see here, these different landscape elements are kind of sprinkled throughout the development, so there is a, a plan. So you're wanting more landscaping, different landscaping?
Just enhancing that whole area.
You want to enhance the, so the whole area being along the ADA path?
Along the whole project site.
Okay.
Are you just talking about the frontage to Rancho California Road?
I'm, I'm, my concern is a street.
Okay, so again, you, okay, so you want, you would like enhanced landscape, more additional landscaping along Rancho California Road, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
If, so just a second, we have the, just a second. So the public hearing has closed, I, since this is a new condition that wasn't discussed with the applicant, we should reopen.
Okay, yeah, I was just going to do that.
Let the applicant come up and address.
Okay, so I'm reopening the public hearing, so if you'd like to?
Again, I, I have to inform you, this is, I have the ability to operate within the parcel that we own.
Okay.
I cannot improve properties all along that right-of-way, I have no ownership interest, it is beyond the control. There is a whole operation agreement that I cannot even get on that property to improve it. So I'm happy to improve the landscaping along our portion of the property, the parcel that, that is owned, but I cannot go along all of Rancho California Road, sir. I have no ability, I have no access rights, and I do not own it. It's, it's not, it's ju, it's a parceled shopping center, owned by multiple different people.
So the entire landscape from the corner all the way to the top of the hill, it's all owned by one, one company then?
Well, the, you have a common area agreement. That a common area agreement, I am just, I am not a controlling partner to that. It is controlled by the owner of the big shop building, Continuum Analytic, controlled by Vons and controlled by, by Target. They are the controlling interest in the property. All I can do is make those improvements along that portion of our right-of-way, and that's all I can do.
And what is your right-of-way?
You know, uh?
So?
The area that is on our site plan.
That's the area I'm talking about? I'm only talking about what's on the paper, on the site plan.
Um, I have to?
Sorry, so if you need to speak, if you can come up to the mic because we can't hear you.
The answer is yes, if he agrees, I, I, he can.
Thank you.
I make sure we're not just miscommunicating.
Okay, we're good?
Yeah, my, my only concern is that there's going to be a one hundred and fifty-foot wide ramp, now there's going to be a big old cement pad. Just want something cohesive, it doesn't have to be, they don't have to rip everything out and put brandy plants, it's just come up with some type of plan. That'll look great.
Yeah, there, there, I mean, I see a plan there, so I see, I see plantings all along there.
No, that's existing. So as of right now, the plan is to, to not touch the landscape, it's to keep it, right?
Yeah, let me just close the public hearing, I'm closing the public hearing, go ahead and, and?
So I, I like to ask staff, as, as of right now, the plan is only to add this ramp? And keep the existing landscape plan as is?
Along Rancho Calif, on that slope?
On the slope.
On the slope. Once you get up off the slope, and you get near, near the buildings, you get in the parking lot, you get by the trash enclosure, that's all going to be added in. Because there's big, as you know, there's big palm trees there right now, and that's, that's all going to get ripped out, obviously.
Yes.
So they'll put in the new stuff.
Yes. And my recommendation would be to, for the applicant to submit a landscape plan, to relanscape the street side.
Well, can we just?
Go ahead.
I, I just, I mean, respectfully, I, I, I think this is fine here, I, I'm okay with the recommended change for that tight corner there, but I don't, I don't feel that there's a need for any additional conditions of approval to be added. We've got the trailer sign and the, and the corner there, I, to me, this is, it's sufficient landscaping that, that's been provided already.
Right, yeah, I, I see the landscaping there, you know, what it exactly is, is in the plantings that you talked about do, being here.
Shrubs and grass and along the slope right now.
Okay.
This is a plan, I'm hesitant to vote on anything that's not already submitted to us, and if we're going to just turn it over and have it just brought back with something later, then why are we voting on it tonight?
Yeah.
They obviously have submitted a landscape plan that looks fine, apparently was fine with staff, the recommendation is we approve it. I, I suspect that we could get this through if we narrowed that down to what it's existing, instead of trying to add to it. All the other conditions seem to be acceptable, the ones that have been suggested. So I, you haven't made your motion yet, right, Fernando?
I have the motion, yeah.
You have, or you have?
So you had started your motion, you hadn't finished it, so?
So should, can I start over again?
Start over again.
When I'm finished, you can start over. I would like you to consider? I would like you to consider not adding that landscape part that you were going to, to begin with, um, otherwise, we're right back to where we're approving stuff that's not in there. But your, your motion, if you go with your motion and just go with the existing landscaping, I could live with that.
All right. So let me make a new motion. New motion where the two, or the thirteen-feet aisle in the beginning, twelve, to remain? And that's it? No landscape?
And then, and the no trailer sign?
And the no trailer.
The no trailer sign.
That was, that was yours, oh, the no trailer sign, I'm sorry.
And then the enhanced landscaping by the ADA path, is that also being added, or that's out now?
After discussion, I think it's not needed. So...
So the answer's no, that's not included?
Not included in the motion.
So we just have two things?
Just two things.
Right.
All right, so we have a motion.
Eric, before we do second that, is, do you, you, you got that, right?
I understand, I got it.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. So we have a motion by Solis, a second by Watts, and we'll vote now, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So passes four to zero, thank you for your patience, we appreciate it, and, uh, we wish you a lot of luck, and, uh, I think you'll have, uh, some very good success there, that's a very busy road, so. Okay, we will go on to, um, the next public hearing, which is the Long Range Project Number LR twenty-one dash thirteen thirty-one, a community wildfire protection plan, and Mark, I guess this is yours.
Yes, sir, it is. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, um, this, as you mentioned, is planning, is the April seventeenth Planning Commission, where we'll be discussing the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, Long Range Project Number LR two-one dash thirteen thirty-one. Before we kind of break into it, I just want to say a big shout-out to CAL FIRE, since they're in the audience for us, um, this whole effort was made possible by a grant from CAL FIRE, so thank you, CAL FIRE. A little bit of background for you, the CWPP was included as a strategic objective contained within the recently updated Quality of Life Master Plan, so specifically within Core Value Number Five, Sustainable and Resilient City. And then in 2021, um, to accomplish this goal, the city applied for and was, was awarded a CAL FIRE grant to develop the CWPP. And the city contracted with SWCA, um, to develop the Temecula Creek CWPP and Story Map, specifically for their extensive local experience and holistic approach to fire planning. A little bit of prior meetings, um, the city council members were individually briefed about the CWPP on, uh, April ninth, and then the Planning Commission General Plan Update Subcommittee was presented the CWPP on April twenty-seventh. With that, I would like to introduce Angela from SWCA, who will be taking over our presentation, uh, when she's complete, she'll send it back to me, and I'll, uh, finish out with the recommendation and CEQA actions.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
Sir.
Welcome.
Good evening, thank you, guys. Thanks, Mark. All right. Uh, Mark provide a little bit of background, so I'll move through the agenda quickly, uh, a little bit more for the project overview, recommended management approach from our studies and our modeling, uh, reviewing the Resource Implementation Guide, which is an extra, not typically part of a community wildfire protection plan or a CWPP, and I'll go over the Story Map, which was part of our stakeholder and public engagement. The project team included some of the above, um, so it's a cross-section of anyone who's involved or impacted by wildfire and wildfire management, includes both nonprofits and different levels of government and academia. In case you're not familiar with the CWPP, or Community Wildfire Protection Plan, um, it stems from the Healthy Forest Restoration Act of two thousand and three, it's collaborative, it must identify and prioritize hazardous fuels, treatments, and methods to protect at-risk communities. At-risk communities are identified, um, in both the federal register and then also at the state level by CAL FIRE, and it must identify measures to reduce structural ignitability, and that ties to California codes, um, such as defensible space and home hardening measures. So the CWPP, uh, only makes recommendations underneath these three categories, resilient landscapes, fire-adapted communities, and safe and effective risk-based wildfire response, it does not mandate anything, it does, however, qualify entities for state and federal funding if you have a current and approved CWPP. So a little bit more of the project, the site is the Temecula Creek, approximately a hundred and seventy-seven acres, we did field sites and modeling, uh, with a half-mile buffer around that, commensurate to what the anticipated fire behavior and, um, influence would be. It includes wildland urban interface, or WUI, directly adjacent to that project site, and from this map, you can see the complexity of different ownership, not only in Temecula Creek, but in the half-mile buffer, and then also, uh, right beyond that, uh, to about one mile here. The area has substantial cultural, biological, ecological, and watershed value, so the goal was to develop an ongoing holistic plan to remove, excuse me, to remove and reduce wildfire fuels while considering these other environmental values. These are some of the, some of the communities around the area.
Excuse me, would you like some water?
For the resource areas for fuels and wildfire, we verified the vegetation during a field visit. And then we modeled fire behavior with these current conditions, and then we performed a risk assessment, which I'll go over here shortly. For natural resources, we conducted botanical wildlife and wetlands surveys, and we verified critical wildlife habitat, least Belzverio and Reparion. We did a cultural resources, uh, records search for the area, as we know, it's very important to the Potanga Tribe. And then for CEQA permitting, we looked at different approaches, including what we believe to be the most streamlined approach. The risk assessment, which ties to the wildfire component, looks at different valued resources and assets on the landscape, and then it looks at what areas would have the greatest risk of loss from wildfire based on these values. This chart here looks at, excuse me, looks at all the different values that went into the risk assessment, it is weighted, so it includes things like fire behavior, but it also includes, um, natural and cultural resources as lo, as well as socio-economic, so those things like communication and infrastructure. This is the risk assessment, so please keep in mind that it is relative to other areas on the landscape, so if it's rated as low, it just means it's low in terms of the other parts of the planning area, it does not mean that there's no, no risk. So you can see that the Temecula Creek itself is predominantly extreme for its risk of loss of critical habitat and other highly valued resources if there were to be a wildfire, as well as some of the areas just outside that, including the wildland urban interface development to the north and some of it to the south. After running the modeling and the field surveys, we, um, created recommendation matrices, which tie to those three themes, um, that a CWPP addresses from the Healthy Forest Restoration Act, so the risk assessment informs that. Restore/Maintain Landscapes focuses on fuels treatments, particularly here invasive species removal. Creating Fire-Adapted Communities focuses on public education and reducing structural ignita, but ignitability through home hardening and other measures. And then the Safe-Effective Risk-Based Wildfire Response looks at improving and aiding emergency response from a public standpoint. So the recommendations for restoring and maintaining resilient landscapes, um, as you have previously seen, it's a complex area, not only from management, but also from the multi-use purpose of it, um, from its cultural significance to its reparian habitat, but also the threat of wildfire to the nearby communities, and also to those wildlife habitats, and with the increased unauthorized trespassing, um, that often results in wildfires right behind homes, there is that added, uh, pressure to reduce the fuel load, so that if a fire were to start, uh, it would not have such extreme fire behavior. So because of all those considerations, the recommendations looked at specific vegetation types or fuel models, and also to balance our need to keep the reparian habitat and wildlife corridor, we predominantly recommended manual treatments, so something that would not be, um, ground disturbing and alter soil. The focus, again, is going to be on invasive species removal, but there are instances where additional vegetation may need to be modified, such as limbing trees to reduce ladder fuels, or thinning, um, shrubs that are overly dense. Recommendations for creating fire-adapted communities, again, it focuses on our, um, codes for defensible space. And then recommendations for the wildfire response is looking at it from a public standpoint, so what can the communities adjacent to the site do to increase the effectiveness of wildfire, um, firefighters when they're responding to incidents? This could be things like increasing public education on the topic, um, letting them know that when they do defensible space, it assists wild, uh, wildland firefighters, um, spreading knowledge about things like firewise programs, firewise communities, and having things like emergency apps, um, for an entire town that let people know about emerging incidents and keeping them updated. In addition to the CWPP, we provided the city with an appendix of additional resources, um, and this is to provide guidance when the city is ready to actually implement fuels treatments and other activities. Um, you can see Appendix A was natural resources, so a lot of this tied to the multiple species habitat conservation plan, so we started the consistency analysis report, um, and did the initial, uh, general field studies for that. We have a permitting matrix for additional permits that may be needed, depending on the different fuels implementation treatments that occur, and then aquatic resources assessment. Appendix B is cultural resources, it's an issues analysis report from the, um, record search, and it also includes communication with the tribes, um, and notification to them as well about the project. And then Appendix C is a strategy for CEQA compliance, um, it includes details of different approaches, including CAL VTP, which would most likely be the most streamlined, uh, method to have CEQA completed for these fuels projects. And the final component of a CWPP is stakeholder and public engagement, so we did have a public review period for two weeks earlier this year in February, we conducted two in-person meetings as well, and we had, um, project team or development team meetings at milestones previous to that. We also created a story map, which is now in the hands of the city GIS team, and it can be continued use to communicate with the public for updates on the project, um, and projects that get implemented. Don't think it's gonna... Sorry, I tried to change screens, but it doesn't let me change screens for you all. And the final steps of a CWPP after adopting official adoption would be getting additional funding for these prioritized projects that are included in those recommendation tables, completing the proper environmental compliance and permitting, um, identifying exactly what from the resource guide that we provided would be appropriate for said implementation measures, actual implementation of the treatments, and keeping things like the story map, the hub site, and the project tracker, which, again, we've turned over to the city GIS, GIS staff, up to date so that you can keep all your collaborators, um, and stakeholders engaged. I can show the story map, but I can't if, uh...
Oscar, can you help bring up the story map?
For some reason, it doesn't like it. Yes, please, thank you. No.
That's all right.
So this is a story map, um, so it's an interactive way to communicate with the public and other stakeholders, uh, we found that having items such as this over just a paper document really increases your public and stakeholder engagement on a project, not only during the process, but longer term, as you continue, um, down the road to do actual projects that stem from this document. So in theory, it's the Cliff Notes version of the paper document, which is why it's so eye-catching to folks, um, you can spend a lot less time, but it has all the important information from that CWPP. So I'll just scroll really quickly, but you can see, you can, um, click on any of these and engage in these, zoom in, look at specific information, pull up current wildfires that are happening in the area, or prescribed burns that are happening in the area. Um, it goes over in detail the fire environment, including, um, the vegetation out there. And then this shows the fire history for the area, so it really gives a clear message of how it has increased over the years, I will fast-forward, but you can see that from the nineteen fifties up into the two thousand and twenties, um, the amount of wildfires has significantly increased in the area. All of those little dots are pretty small fires, so they're represented by the point source, not an actual perimeter like the other ones, but you can see every single one pretty much has happened since two thousand and twenty. And then I'll just scroll down, um, the risk assessment, again, this is, you know, the static map I showed earlier, so again, you can zoom in on a particular neighborhood if you're interested, you can even zoom out and look at what it is beyond the project area that we considered. The HBRAs, again, are all the identified values at risk of loss if there were to be a wildfire in the area. And then if you come down to the mitigation strategies, these include those three recommendation tables that I briefly showed you, with the recommended actions from this document. And you can, if you are still interested in the full document, read it as well.
Is this online now?
Yes.
It is, okay.
Yes, anybody can access this.
All right. Guess I'll take it back over. Yeah, all right, we'll skip the slides. All right, so staff CEQA determination, staff has determined that the proposed CWPP is categorically, categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act CEQA, per, uh, CEQA Section one-five-zero-six-one-B-three, and statutorily exempt per CEQA Section one-five-two-six-two. Staff's recommendation is to adopt the PC resolution, adopting the Temecula Creek Community Wildfire Protection Plan, and find the project exempt from environmental review per CEQA Guideline Section 15061B3 and 15262. This completes my presentation. I'm available for questions. We have our consultant as well, and our emergency manager, Michael, was good enough to join us as well should you have some additional questions regarding that.
Okay, thank you all. We'll start with our expert in this field.
Two things. What's that slide picture of that river?
My background?
Yeah.
Oh, that's from the North Fire. If you're familiar with that one up in Butte County, I was on there. So I hike it every year to document its recovery. It's the Feather River.
That's a good picture.
Second thing, Mark, what kind of public participation did we have at the two meetings?
They were not as much as I would have liked, unfortunately. We did a good social media output. We reached out to our development team as well of our, as well of, forgive me, as well of, as all of our HOAs that we had contact information to. Unfortunately, we didn't get a very large response from them. We did have a good participation from some of the agencies, the Nature Conservancy, Sierra Club, CDFW, Pachanga as well, but we did not have as much community input as I would have liked.
So there's probably no way to tell how much of the community came from that end of town?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Well, it looks like your effort was Herculean, but the results were a little less than you probably wanted. But my compliments on reaching out and getting public input on that. It's a very important subject. Anyhow, that's my question.
Commissioner Solis? Nothing? Same question? Okay. My question is regarding human beings. I know it's mentioned in here a number of times that human intrusion can be a major fire starting hazard. And was more, was curious about if there will be any effort to try to diminish you, you know, the human impact on, on it, everything from kids on their bicycles or more importantly now, e-bikes with electric, which I gather could be fire starters, to, I don't know if there's any areas that cars can drive through. I can tell you on Miurieta Creek up along Cherry Street in that area there, at five o'clock, there's probably 10 or 15 cars that cross, crossover. And I've, a couple of times, I actually saw sparks coming off cars, hitting rocks and stuff like that that I know could be a fire hazard. And then, you know, homeless, I mean, there's all kinds of different, different activities that can take place there. So I was curious if that's something that we would, are targeting to try to diminish the human impact?
Yes, we are. That is part of the project. We do have a, part of that was a fencing plan, obviously. As much as we would like to keep transients out, that is a big ignition source for a lot of the fires in the creek, whether it's trying to stay warm or whatever it may be. That is a pretty substantial ignition source. Our grant addresses that some. We also have another grant in the area through the Nature Conservancy, which is a little bit more focused. They're trying to turn the undercrossing under the 15 for mountain lions and other wildlife. So their grant there is a little more focused on the fencing and keeping people out, where ours is more about the treatment of the fuels reduction itself. It is a part of it, but it isn't the major focus.
Yeah, okay. So I would gather there's no public speakers on this?
No, none.
None, okay. So we won't open a public hearing? Any discussion? Do you want to go ahead?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Any other discussion?
No, I would just say I appreciate these efforts. To me, this is very interesting, intriguing, and forward-thinking, you know, for us. So and some of, even the conversations we had in an earlier subcommittee about fire and some of the changes on this. So seeing, seeing the city take, take this kind of charge ahead of it and, you know, hopefully set an example like we do in Temecula, I think is awesome.
Yeah, I mean, it's something, it's very complex. And obviously, a lot, a lot of parties involved in the discussion, so it can be, it's something that could drag on for a long, long time until you, until you can come up to a resolution and plans. So, great job. So I'll entertain a motion.
Well, go ahead and move that we adopt the motion accepting the, adopting the Temecula Creek Community Wildfire Plan, whatever the name is, Community Wildfire Protection Plan.
Right.
And as long as it meets the CEQA requirements as part of that as well.
I'll second the motion.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Watson, a second by Commissioner Ruiz. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It passes forward at zero. And that is the end of the public hearings. Let's go on to commissioner reports. Do you want to start? Nothing?
Two things for my friend Matt over there. But I know the pedestrian access is a big part of the bike and hike and everything else. And I noticed that a lot of the city streets are impacted by either adjacent vegetation blocking part of the sidewalk or tree roots that are raising the sidewalks up. As a pedestrian, I can, I can attest to that. They're all over the city and they, they need to be addressed at some point. Second thing is I'm just going to pile on with everybody else, but these e-bikes are just out of control. They're on the bike, on the sidewalks, kids don't have helmets, they're running the red lights. I know they're aware of it. I know they want to deal with it. So I'm just chiming in and saying it's a problem. Anyhow, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
No report.
Okay. Subcommittee reports. Do you want to go through what we went today?
I can cover a couple. We had actually back-to-back subcommittee reports. The Municipal Code Maintenance Subcommittee met as a follow-up to the tree ordinance that was discussed at a, at a previous planning commission meeting, essentially addressing a lot of the concerns and questions that were brought forward, you know, from, from commission here and going through and kind of addressing and answering those. So when this does come back, I feel confident that everything that we had brought forward will be fully addressed on there. If there's anything to add.
No, I think it'll be back, I think, May, middle of May, and we'll discuss it further. But I think we got all the answers that we were seeking, so.
I think Public Works is targeting June 5th. June 5th as that planning commission meeting.
Okay, yeah. Did you have another one?
And then we did have another meeting on the Temecula Resort and Spa. If you remember, that was referred back for basically a redesign, I think was a, was a recommendation that was made there. The applicant has continued to work with city on that and come quite a long way, I think, from, from where we were before. So we'll be seeing that again here in the, in the near future as well.
Yeah, I think that's, that's middle of May.
Yeah.
Gary? Okay. Community development report. Matt?
Good evening. Just a reminder to mark your calendars for May 30th, which is a Thursday for State of the City, if you haven't already. We'll be reaching out. We'll get something on your calendars, and Denise takes care of the tickets for that. And then with regard to e-bikes, we had a meeting just this past week with the, the TATCAP, the Temecula Active Transportation Community Advisory Panel. And the members included, I didn't come up with the name, members from BTV or Bike Temecula Valley, the School District, and Riverside Sheriff's Office. We hear you loud and clear on the e-bikes. Almost daily, we get emails or phone calls. But we're working with the school district on a future permitting or registration program where students will have to watch or attend a video and then actually sign a contract, kind of like an athlete's contract, that the student understands the rules. But we're also going to ask the parents that they sign the same registration form because a lot of the issues are parents purchasing Class III e-bikes, which are basically electric motorcycles for their kids, maybe not realizing they go faster than 20 miles an hour, and then not buying them a helmet. So it's a lot of education, it's also enforcement, and it's a unique challenge.
Do we know if there's anything at the state level that is being discussed?
Yeah, there's, we're monitoring legislation. There's been a few bills didn't quite make it through, and there's another one that we're tracking this year.
I appreciate your report on that, Matt. That's, that's good to hear. Last thing in the world, any of us want to see is, you know, some child with, you know, with not being able to handle that and cause a problem. So thank you for, I realize it's a big deal, so.
You're welcome. And I'll let, I'll let Ron speak to the sidewalk issue and some of the landscaping.
So I guess that's your cue, Ron.
Okay. So a couple of items for you tonight. One, I'll address that with the sidewalks. Typically, we've had very much success with people using my Civic app. If you're walking along, I know you both are big walkers, take a picture and we'll address it right away. Other than that, we do try to get to all of the city sidewalks. We do, we just recently completed our IMS scan. So that scanned all of our streets and sidewalks, and we, it comes up with a pavement, pavement condition index. But it also helps us to visualize what problems we have in sidewalks. So that creates the plan for us to do our citywide concrete repair. And so that's done annually, and we look for those problem areas.
As far as the landscaping, that's usually not the city's responsibility, correct?
Correct.
Either the homeowners association or a homeowner.
We do have some service levels that we do take care of for certain associations. For instance, the Crown Hill area. So even though it's HOA, those residents pay an assessment, and we take care of the landscaping. So we do have pockets of that where we can go in if we get a report that there's sightline problems, pedestrian problems, and we take care of that.
Yeah, I, I didn't mean to infer that it's a city problem with a lot of landscaping, but it's hard to track down who's really responsible for that.
Right, and even if it's a private owner or an HOA, if we're notified, we, we do take care of it. You know, we, we don't just leave it on the shoulders of an HOA and say, well, not our problem. We, we do take care of it.
I'll, I'll start a journal on that and put it right next to my shopping cart.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, Civic app is great. You know, we get a picture and we're on it.
And I must say, the, the response on that is amazing, both from the graffiti standpoint, usually within a day, the graffiti's taken. And then potholes, I used that the other day, and that was filled quickly. So that, keep it up. That's a great program. You guys are doing great with that.
All right, thank you. And the second item, we have a slide for you, and it's going to be our Nicholas Road detour, the closure of Nicholas Road. And that's because where Girisol ties into Nicholas right there. You can see in the area in red is going to be completely under construction. There's going to be four eight-foot culverts that are going to be, having to be constructed. And then Nicholas, you can see, will go straight. It'll follow the dirt road that's out there, and you can see in the top left-hand corner of the page where the Park and Ride is at. That's essentially ties into Butterfield Stage, the improvements they've already done. Since this aerial was done, all of the area from the MWD easements and up by Butterfield, all that is paved and has trail. And then they're working now on the south end part of Nicholas. You've probably seen that, a lot of construction going on there. But the area in red is what's really left to do. This detour is going to be in place for the entirety of this year so that they can construct that. And so residents are going to have to essentially use Cuyahoga Medusa to get around to get to Butterfield. We are going to encourage, if you look at the left side, the green areas that go through the Leifer area, these are dirt roads, equestrian. We're going to have that as only local traffic. We don't want people using those roads to get to Butterfield Stage Road because that would negatively impact them. In addition, we're going to put an always stop where this detour occurs so that people are able to make that right-hand turn and go that way along Medusa and all the way to Los Arena. Most likely, that always stop will stay in place post-construction because we're anticipating that the speeds on Nicholas are going to be so great that we're going to need some type of control. And the developer was not conditioned for any signals or anything like that because it was conditioned 20 years ago. And then we will do a complete analysis of the corridor post-construction to establish the speeds, to establish if we need any stop controls. So we'll do that post-construction. So from Medusa here and Leifer, heading towards Butterfield Stage Road, I know that Nicholas is four lanes when you're up by Joseph Road going towards Chaparral High School. I just want to make it clear, the developer was only conditioned to do two lanes with a median, striped median in the center for turn movements. So it's going to act more like what we call a secondary arterial. So it's not, so I think that the public really thinks, oh, Nicholas, it's going to go all the way through. We're going to have four lanes. No, we're not going to have four lanes. There is enough right-of-way to be four lanes someday, but that will all have to be on the city at some point because the developer was conditioned the way it was conditioned 20 years ago. So this, this, this detour goes into effect. I got a text in the middle of our meeting today. They have to delay it due to some property acquisitions, so it's going to go into effect the 29th. So just, I know that some reports went out that it was going to come this Monday. It'll be a week late, the 29th. So if you have any questions regarding this or the impacts, please let me know.
Is there, is there a plan yet for reducing the four lanes down to two safely? Because, I mean, the speeds can pick up pretty good in here because it's pretty, pretty much a straightaway.
Yeah, there is a tapered, a taper plan, so that, that is, that is in the works, so. And our traffic department went thoroughly through the plan, so we know what we have.
Right, because this, the actual work is being done by the developer, is that correct?
Correct. It's, it's a CFD project, so the residents are really paying for it. However, the developer is on the hook for, you know, funding the CFD, but then also, you know, putting in the improvements.
Right, yeah, I know turning it over to them sped up the timeframe quite a bit.
Correct. It was originally going to be administered by the city, but because they were running out of money, they didn't want the city to do it because that's, you know, prevailing wage. So they took it over so that they could control the cost because it's the last project out of the big CFD. This is the last facility that they were required to construct.
Okay. Regarding the sidewalks, in my neighborhood, we have a lot of sidewalks that are on the, the Property Owners Association property, and then, of course, all the sidewalks along all the streets. And I noticed that they, there was a lot of work done, both in replacing sidewalk and, and carving, you know, some of it down in various places. And it was in both what I would consider city sidewalk and the homeowners association, all done at the same time. I didn't, I don't, what I guess I wasn't sure of is whether that was all being done by the homeowners association or all being done by the city, or there was a, you know, a meeting and got together and bolted them at the same time, or whether the maintenance of the sidewalks within a neighborhood actually are the property or the homeowners association responsibility.
No, typically, the sidewalks that are up against the roadways are in city right-of-way. There's also government code that basically, it's a little complex, but government code says that the homeowner's responsibility if the sidewalk's in front of their home. But the chances of a homeowner actually going and doing repairs and such are pretty slim. So we take care of the sidewalks. You know, we make sure. Now, interior to like, let's say, an HOA park, where, you know, the Seo del Sol has extensive trails. That's going to be the HOA. If we see that it's something that we can refer to code, code will take care of it because it's not technically city property. We don't really want to touch non-city property. However, in the case of when we see it as a health and safety issue, we will jump in there and take care of it.
Okay. So could it be a coincidence that both of them were done at the same time?
It's more probable that, that we did both.
Okay, that's what I kind of thought.
Yeah.
It was done very well, I will say.
Thank you.
Pretty much every place that I saw that needed to be done was done, so it was extremely thorough, too.
Thank you.
Got a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Ron, that, the stop sign at Cuyahoga Medusa there, is that going to have the LED lights around it? Is it a lit sign?
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to light it up so people aren't, they're not used to it right now. So we're going to light it up. We're going to have CMS boards, advance warnings. So it's going to be very, very visible.
Okay, yeah, and not, not only because it's new, but that's a fairly dark road anyway? So to have a brand-new stop sign there and then come across at night, so.
Yeah, and then there's going to be during the course of the detour barricades right there as well because we don't want anybody going through there, and they're going to run right into this, these culverts that are being constructed. So there will be extensive barricades at the end there.
Okay, I'm just glad you're here. Not, I was going to recommend just one of those, you know, the flashing LED lights on it or something there, so.
Yeah, that, that place is going to be lit up really well.
What date is this going to start?
29th.
29th, okay. 29th, okay. Okay, I think that's it. Anybody have anything else? All right, I will close the planning commission meeting to the next one, which is Wednesday, May 1st, 2024. And thank you.